I will go ahead and call the October eighteenth Monticello School Board Direct 818 meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we will note, Clay, that both Candace Carter and Jeff Hegley are absent tonight. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes for zero. And we do not have any citizens' comments on the night. We can go to our present agenda. Board members, you would have received this information with the packet of stuff. Thing that we need to discuss further now is the time, otherwise I seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes for zero. And now we are on to the end of the year report with Tina.
Good evening. Like Jennifer mentioned, we have our end of year report tonight for last school year. I like to start off our presentation always with looking at enrollment. And so our first slide has our resident students for the last five years, and that's the red bar. And we also have the students that actually attend our school district in the light bar, the white bar. And so you will see similar trends throughout the last five years. Resident enrollment is slightly higher than what comes, what is served in our district. So we are an enrollment loser when it comes to who's attending our schools within our boundaries. But there are similar trends. We're still heading steadfast in our enrollment levels. But for 2021, both the resident and the kids coming to our district dropped from the previous year. Our next slide has our funding source. The general education aid is the largest state aid revenue that we get that helps our budget. And so for the last six years, we've seen a 2% increase in our general education aid. And so that's just showing here. So those two slides, enrollment and our general education aid drives our budget. So you can see those trends. And for this report, I like to start with our general fund. It's our main operating fund. Monticello is a little unique where it includes our Northern Sherburne Wright Special Ed Cooperative. They are a separate entity, but they purchase staff from the Monticello School District. So their staff is under Monticello employment contracts. So when the state looks at our financial information, it looks at both Monticello information and the Monticello School District and the co-op information. We keep track of the Northern Sherburne Wright employees through a separate fund. So about 10 to 11 million, depending on what school year you're looking at, is the cost of their staff and the money coming in from the co-op that purchases those staff. On the next slide, you can see why it's a challenge to describe this to people. When people look at our financial information and they look at our total revenues or expenses, our revenues and expenses are a little inflated because of the co-op activity. So when they look at our total expenditures that's reported to the state, it's higher than if you just look at true Monticello School District costs. And as you look at it as a per pupil or per student ratio, just looking at Monticello, it'd be 11,000 to 12,000 per kid that we're spending. But when it pulls in that cooperative information as well that gets reported, it looks higher where it's that 14,000 to 15,000 per student. So just some information to kind of get a little more background on our general fund information. And we'll start next, dive in a little deeper with just the general fund on the Monticello School side. So with revenues for the 2021 school year, we were slightly over budget. So more revenue came in than planned by 0.8%, but pretty close to budget. We had additional TIF revenue, which is tax increment finance revenue through the local property tax revenue coming in. Our enrollment was slightly better than estimated, mostly due to voluntary preschool enrollment. We had some funding that was approved, so some slots had to come over to the general fund versus the community service fund. Federal was slightly below budget as we were waiting for some Chromebooks to come in, and they didn't come in until August of this school year. So that's why you see slightly under budget. And then other revenue, there was less fundraising and gate revenue. With the last school year, we had restrictions on who could attend our activities. In looking at revenues comparison to last year, there was a big boost. And a lot of that is the 1.7 million in federal CARES money that we received in 2020-21. The next slide just has a pie chart of the revenue coming in. So you can see our still main funding source is state revenue coming in at 73%, federal at 5%, and local property tax at 18%, and other at 4%. On the expenditure side for the general fund in Monticello, expenditures were even closer to budget, just 0.1% under budget. We had more subs. We had 60-day subs, regular subs to kind of help with our employment absences. We had some leaves towards the end of the year that wasn't included in the final revised budget. Under purchase services, that was over budget, and that mainly had to do with our HVAC improvements. Originally, that was going to be coded to capital. But what we are always learning is that the state has certain code combinations that are allowed. So we operate under one assumption that a certain code combination would be approved. But then when you do your submission to the state, it gets rejected. And so you have to find a code combination that works. And we knew the HVAC improvements were an approved project under the federal program, but you just had to get it into under purchase services instead of capital outlay. So there's that budget over/under between those two categories. And then supplies and materials, that was under budget, again with the Chromebook orders coming in later than this 2021 school year. And then with our building budgets being under and having that supply carryover for the next school year. When you look at our expenditures compared to prior year, again, it increased mainly with our 1.7 million in CARES funding that came in. This was spent on additional staff to socially distance our classrooms and have smaller class sizes. Our HVAC improvements, our one-to-one device implementation across all grades, our 60-day subs, our masks or other cleaning supplies. And we implemented triple routes to space out kids on our buses and get them to school. Other unique staffing that we had last year with our CARES COVID money, our tech integrationists, we implemented with our one-to-one device initiative. We added a third nurse. We had two behavioral specialists at our elementaries, additional intervention staff to help at our elementary buildings, and the additional support staff at our nature-based sites. So all those things were new in comparison to the 1920 school year. The next slide is just a pie chart of how we spend our money. So you can still see that almost 80% of our budget is still people with salaries and benefits. So how is the year ending? We'll look at our fund balance. First category is the restricted fund balance, and this is based on state guidelines and definitions. So the money coming in has strings attached, and you can only spend those monies on certain things. And whatever you don't spend carries over to the next year. So we have health and safety, safe schools, achievement and integration, student activities, area learning programs, which is our summer school targeted service-type programs, staff development, third-party billing, our operating capital, and long-term facility maintenance revenue. The next category is the assigned or committed fund balance. So these are designated either by the school board or the administrative staff. We have severance committed fund balance that was implemented about nine years ago, and we've gradually spent it down on severance obligations that happen each year. So we're down to 633,000 at the end of last year. Building carryover that we have with our supply budgets, and then our scoreboard advertising, where the money coming in for the advertising signs pay for the least cost of the scoreboards. The last category is our unassigned fund balance and the non-spendable fund balance. The non-spendable fund balance is basically our prepaid. It's just an accounting mechanism that we have to do. So with both the non-spendable and the unassigned fund balance, you take those two together and compare it to our total expenditures. And we ended the year at about 7.2%. And so our fund balance policy is to be within 8% to 16%. If we're under 8%, we're supposed to freeze spending. Or if we have money coming in, we could add expenditures, knowing that that money's coming in to help those costs. And anything below 6%, we should reduce spending and increase revenue by other means, such as our voter operating referendum. This is just a chart of our unassigned fund balance for the last four years. So in summary, on our general fund, the COVID, federal CARES money, whatever you want to call it, that has really helped us that last school year for 2020-21. Without that money, we had enrollment losses with restrictions where we had to space out kids or serve kids differently, whether it's through hybrid or lunch or whatever. All that money helped with those restrictions. Any questions on general fund before I move on to the other funds?
No, this is for the school board to hear the presentation, so.
Next is our special ed co-op fund that is part of our general fund, but we keep track of it separately. So it's basically a break-even fund. The money coming in from the co-op pays for the staff. So pretty close to budget on the revenue and expense side. Looking at prior year, we had some additional staff to help with either assessments or our C5 program. But some positions were kind of held, like the pair positions where we didn't fill them until we needed them. And we had, on the benefit side, additional retirements happening where that increased our retirement insurance costs. Next, we have our food service fund. Total meals served for last year was 5,995,706 meals. A lot of that had to do with our breakfast meal program where our three-year average was about 114,000, and that practically doubled to serving 245,000 meals for breakfast. Lunch took a little bit of hit on what was served. Our three-year average was 415,000, and we only served 349,000. So we were restricted on what we were serving, kids. We had one hot meal, one cold meal, with all the packaging that we had to do and what we could do. But we were innovative and trying to get hybrid meals out to students when they left for the day and had a meal for the next school day while they were at home. We had weekend meals. We had seven-day meals for the distant learners. So we tried to do a lot to help that program. And hopefully, moving forward, our meals served will go up with the additional options we're able to do this school year. Our community service fund performed close to budget. The one thing I want to point out here is our school readiness program or our preschool program went into the red as we had the same number of sections, but we had lower class sizes to help with the social distancing again that needed to happen. So a transfer that will be our next agenda item needs to be approved to net that program back to zero. And that'll be $54,702. Next, we have our hockey fun is another break-even fun. If there's a surplus, we split that surplus 50-50 with the Monticello Youth Hockey Association. And if there's a deficit, the Monticello Youth Hockey Association has to take care of that deficit. So for the 2021 school year, there was a deficit in the amount of 35,639. So the Monticello Youth Hockey Association has to take care of that. We sold as much ice time as we could, but we had lower concession revenue coming in, and we were limited on the gate revenue and who could attend our games. Our building construction fund will be closed after the 2021 school year. All the bond referendum projects or long-term facility maintenance projects that were funded by bonds and our Pinewood indoor air quality project are all complete. And we approved a transfer a couple meetings ago to transfer all the bond proceeds that were remaining for our Pinewood project back to the debt service fund to offset future levies. The debt service fund is basically property tax money coming in and our bond and interest payments coming out. And so you can see that transfer in from our construction fund of $941,875. The state looks at fund balance in the debt service fund, and if it gets too high, it offsets future property tax levy. So that's how the state will see that transfer in and make sure that offsets future property tax levies. Our internal service fund is our self-insurance fund with our dental insurance program. We are still looking at this fund. We did have some staff turnover in the spring. So I just want to double-check some of the benefit reconciliations. But right now, we're still sitting with a lot of months in reserve for that program at 145,000 in fund balance. And our final fund is our other post-employment benefit fund. So this fund recognizes all retiree insurance funds, whether it's paid out of this fund or the general fund. But we really only use the trust fund to pay for retiree insurances that are from contracts that do not have the sunset language in it. So our trust will end the year at about 1.6 million in the trust. Again, any questions?
Thank you, Tina, for going over all of that. Board members, any questions? And we can move on to the fund transfer.
Yes, so with our community service fund, like I mentioned, the preschool, school readiness fund was the deficit fund balance. So I'm asking the board to approve a transfer between the general fund to the community service fund in the amount of $54,702.
I have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second, this is Jamie.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes for zero. Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Now on to Raulson with a resolution for some gifts.
Yes, I have two gifts to bring forward to the school board tonight. The first one is Center Care Health in Monticello has $2,000 annually for three years to offset costs of having a trainer at our varsity competitions. So this is something that they, in the past, and brought it back again this year. Very appreciative for that partnership. I'll go forward to you. Second one, it comes from the Ed Lane Memorial Fund. Mr. Ed Lane taught in parts of four decades at Pinewood Elementary. Memorial Fund has donated $1,000 in Gopher Sports gift cards to be used to purchase physical education equipment at Pinewood. To here tonight for action.
Does somebody have the resolution up?
I can read it. Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board, number 882, to gratefully accept the following donations. Center Care Health Monticello for $2,000 annually for three years to offset the costs of having a trainer at the varsity competitions. And also the Ed Lane Memorial Fund for $1,000 in Gopher Sports gift cards for purchasing physical education equipment for Pinewood Elementary.
Second.
Resolution read by Jamie, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. For zero. Our community for all the things you donate to us. Our literacy update with Cindy Fosching and Lindsay Retman.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm going to start by just saying that before I introduce my guest here, Lindsay, I just wanted to say the reason that we're here tonight is that according to our 2122 Learning Recovery Plan that we developed, we had three major goals that we are addressing. There are about five or six goals, but the goals we want to talk about tonight are related to literacy. So three of those goals, one of them, improving reading instruction across our district to increase proficiency for all students, increase our intervention opportunities for all students, and improve our intervention resources, and then also work to closing achievement gaps across the district. So with those three goals in mind, we came up with some strategies to implement across the district in order to address those goals. And we have many strategies as well, but these are just four that I wanted to highlight. So the first thing that we decided to do using some of our ESAR funding was to hire a part-time, and so Lindsay is part-time, half-time, district literacy specialist that's been working with our district. So she's going to be talking to you about that tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about our structured literacy curriculum research and professional development that we've been doing. We are going to talk a little bit about our improved literacy plan and how we're collecting data, and then the training for interventions that we're doing across the district. And so I'd like to introduce Lindsay Retman.
Hi. It's nice to meet you, and I'm really glad I can be here tonight to share with you the work we've been doing at the elementary schools toward those goals that Cindy was just talking about. In my role this year, I am facilitating some of the professional development at the elementary schools in the area of language arts, and I'm involved in general program development and also in our curriculum review, taking a look at our teaching practices and the materials that we're using and looking at materials that we're going to transition to next. The other half of my job is as being an EL teacher and a reading specialist at Eastview. We have a lot going on in the district towards meeting those goals. And I'll talk to you a little bit tonight about each of these very briefly. Firstly, this all kind of fits within a framework of a multi-tiered system of supports, which is something that you'll hear a lot about in education now. And multi-tiered system of supports or MTSS is really about how it is that we're delivering all of our academic and social-emotional learning experiences for kids, that there is a universal or a tier-one experience that all students will receive. And some students are in need of more targeted services, and some students, a few, are in need of more intensive services. And the idea is that it's really important that all students receive that strong, universal, tier-one instruction. As you can see, when these are stacked in this way, it's not as effective if students aren't receiving that. They aren't going to get up to that intensive that they need if they aren't getting that universal instruction as well. Historically, schools, and Cindy was saying that some of the goals are to be closing achievement gaps and to be looking at how we're going to be providing for all students and especially those in need of intervention. Historically, schools have really looked toward those intensive and targeted services first in how they're going to be addressing those issues. And in a multi-tiered system of supports, we look firstly at that universal tier, what kind of instruction we're delivering to all students. And one of the things that we did in order to build this multi-tiered system of supports in the elementaries and the language arts area is last year a literacy team was formed. And I'll let Cindy talk about that. and I'll let Cindy talk about that a bit.
We formed a literacy team that has teachers from all different grade levels, and we took all of our reading specialists, and every building has a reading specialist. We took our Title I lead teachers. We had classroom teachers who were grade-level representatives. We took special education representatives. We also had elementary principals and administrators on the, on the team as well as myself. Some of the things that we are working on is improving our literacy plan overall. And in specifics, we're looking at plans for addressing needs for students who show signs of dyslexia, and that is a government mandate that we also serve those students if they are showing signs of dyslexia. And so what we are learning is how to embed that instruction within our regular education curriculum so that all students are receiving top-level services and we're addressing all the needs of those specific students with dyslexia. And so this team is focused on what kind of professional development do we need, what kind of instruction do our students need in order to improve, and then we're reviewing and analyzing materials throughout the year. So we'll talk a little bit more about that.
And if you want to talk about the literacy plan a bit?
Oh, okay, yep. And so we're also looking at our literacy plan, and the literacy plan is really based on the Read Well by Third Grade, which is a state of Minnesota mandate, that the expectation is that all students by the end of third grade will read at grade level. And so we want to get there. And right now, we're not there, and I don't think there's probably anybody in the state of Minnesota who is right there. But our goal is to get as close as we can to that. And so we've been working really hard with a woman named Wendy Stitchin, and she's from the St. Croix River Valley Special Education Cooperative, and she is also trained by the state of Minnesota in literacy expertise. And so she's really been working hand-in-hand with us, with our teachers, to work on our literacy plan, to develop something that will stand for years to come with best practice, best assessments, and really helping to train our teachers throughout the year. So one of the things that she is doing is she's, she's meeting with our teachers every other week throughout the year for 18 different sessions and really training them on best strategies. And then she's working with Lindsay and I and our literacy team to really have the best plan that we can moving forward, bringing sample plans from other districts and really helping us meld ours.
Something that Wendy has made clear, and it's been clear to us too, as Cindy was saying, there is no school that is, at this point, having all students meeting by grade three. And so we are in good company, not just in the state of Minnesota, but nationally. And we have, we've done a lot in the last year, and we're continuing to do more in terms of the professional learning that our teachers and admin are receiving. Last year, on the left side of the slide, you can see the website that I'd put together for Eastview. There were weekly sessions that we did on different aspects of scientifically-based reading instruction and how that looks in a classroom, which is called Structured Language and Literacy. The work that we're going to add to it this year is, the, last year, MDE put out the Language Arts Standards, the draft for the 2020 standards, and we're going to start working on understanding those. And then, as Cindy had mentioned, that letters, which means language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, and that is the work that we're doing. There's six of us, five of us in the district? Six.
Who are getting extensive.
We're doing the letters, the extensive, seven of us in the district who are doing the extensive training, and it is extensive. It is, it is really a commitment, and all of this professional development is very much a commitment, that it's been pretty amazing how teachers have just been, and admin have just been really excited about this and wanting to learn more. And that's not something that you see in, in all districts, so that's been really wonderful.
And then, do you want to add how many student teachers are participating with Wendy?
Oh, and, and then Cindy had mentioned that there's also those 18 sessions that Wendy Stitchin, our consultant, is doing. Those are 35 students across the district that are participating in that, and those are weekly sessions, or not weekly, twice a month, those are happening. One of the other pieces that we're working on this year, and especially what the literacy team is looking at, is the materials that we're using. Curriculum materials are important, just like the teaching is, is really important. And it's important that kids have a guaranteed and viable instruction, so meaning that they are all guaranteed that same universal tier, that same core instruction, and that it's viable, it's something that has an evidence base of that it works. A lot of states are doing this for their school districts. So states like Colorado have put together a list of curriculum materials that the, the public schools can choose from. Other states have particular funding in this, in the form of grants that schools can apply for if they are using scientifically researched reading instructional practices. Minnesota does not have this. There's a lot that they're doing to try to provide professional, oops, professional development for teachers, but it's really up to schools to be doing this work of finding out what are the curriculum materials that are going to be, have that strong evidence base and are going to really work for our students. One of the places that we've been turning to is edreports.org, and Ed Reports has come around the last five to 10 years. It's a nonprofit that reviews, like, curriculum materials in all areas, and it's reviewing against a set criteria. So it's not something that will rank or tell you that these are the best programs or that this is the best program for your school, and they're not trying to sell us anything. They're looking at specific criteria that is considered high-quality curriculum materials, and they're looking for how certain materials will meet those criteria. And as you can see on this one, that all of the little circles are green. There's rankings and there's detailed information on all of this, but we are looking at, at materials that have those highest rankings, so they're in the green. It's, there's a green and a yellow and a red, and believe it or not, there are a lot of curriculum materials out there that are considered in that red area and are not considered to be high-quality materials but are still very much being sold. So this is part of the work, and this is one of the resources that we're utilizing for doing that work. This year, at Eastview, we are piloting a new language arts curriculum. It's called Amplify CKLA. CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts, and the word core, core knowledge, as another educational nonprofit, existed for, long before the Common Core standards ever came into being, so it really has nothing to do with that. But core knowledge is a set of curriculum materials that has high ratings for both the foundational skills, how it's teaching phonemic awareness and phonics, like, and how kids are going to actually decode the words and spell. And it also has very high rankings for building a strong knowledge base for students, which is, when part of the professional learning that we've been doing, is just how important that is to be helping kids to build knowledge throughout their whole elementary and then on into middle school and high school career. There's a picture, a few pictures of in kindergarten, as I was saying, there's two components. There's the knowledge-building component that you can see being taught on the left, and there's the foundational skills, like the phonics component that's over on the right. And it's, it's been pretty incredible. We have kindergartners who are now, this was just this last week, they are blending words, you know, they're putting letters together, and they know those sounds, and they are blending them, which is really, it's, we haven't seen this before. The other thing that we're doing at Eastview is we've implemented handwriting without tiers as our handwriting, and not just handwriting, but also our alphabet knowledge curriculum, an area that we could see in years of testing that we needed to beef up, and it's something that we've started this year. So students, you can go on to the next picture, the next slide. So students are getting practice that's multisensory, meaning that they are getting a chance to build the letters, they're getting a chance to use chalk and chalkboards, and they're getting a chance to write with a pencil and learning how to do all of that properly to build automaticity and fluency, so that when it does come time to be learning how to spell these words, they have all these other skills down pat, and they aren't thinking about how they're going to be forming the letters, they have that. The other thing, which, it is a lot, at kindergarten, we've done a lot this year, and this one goes beyond kindergarten, this is in grades one and two. We also could see from the test results that we needed to beef up our phonological or phonemic awareness, and that's how we can hear the sounds in words, and it's really an important part of learning to read and learning to spell. And at the kindergarten level, we started last year piloting this a bit, and we're using it fully throughout the kindergarten and grades one and two. And it's a, it's a curriculum resource that takes just a few minutes a day and gives kids a lot of comprehensive practice on those listening for sounds and playing what we call word games. And it's things that we, as a teacher, I've been teaching, this is almost 19, 20 years, and these are things that I wasn't doing in the past. I didn't know to do these things, and it's really exciting to think about how much farther we can get kids ahead by doing this. And the next slide has a quick little video, a few seconds, to see, you can see how the kindergartners are doing it.
Add large.
Largest.
Word is largest.
Largest.
Take away large, add nice.
Nicest.
Word is nicest.
Nicest.
Take away nice, add small.
Smallest.
Kiss your brain.
The cuteness factor is, it's high, too. And so, and there's a lot of joy in this as well, you know? It sounds sometimes when we start talking about that we're going to really work on this knowledge and these foundational skills, that it's going to kill the joy, and it hasn't. We really are seeing students finding fun in the success that they're having.
So just, whoop, back up one more. Thank you. So our proposed timeline for looking at materials, just so that you know where, where we're at, we've been working since August and we'll work through January. We'll be meeting, reviewing materials, aligning them to the standards, and looking at it through a lens of structured literacy to make sure that we are narrowing down our possibilities. And then by February and March, we'll choose some finalists as far as our curriculum resources go, and by April and May, we'll pilot at a few, few grade levels, some lessons not just in kindergarten, but throughout other grade levels. And then by June, our literacy team will choose new curriculum materials for the upcoming years. Now, that doesn't mean that everything will be purchased by then, because the budget does not allow for you to purchase all the way, all grades at once, so there'll be a staggered implementation most likely, but it'll all be budget-dependent. But the urgency is here to begin the process, because, you know, we look at our district scores, we look at the learning loss that all students have, have been exposed to, and the urgency is here. So we're going to move quickly on finding materials. Next slide.
This is just for you, if anyone is, is curious and wants to learn more. I've copied off several articles, and they're sitting on the table by the door. A lot of the professional learning we've been doing has been us taking a look at all of the materials that are out there. And by materials, I don't mean curriculum materials, I mean all that's there for us to be learning as, as a school. And there's great articles, there's great podcasts, these podcasts have been really powerful all over the US, and they've been, they've really driven a lot of change, and I would highly recommend listening. And as I was saying, this really is, oh, that didn't turn out so well, sorry. As I was saying, this is really about creating joy. You know, we talk about how we want kids to love reading, and that is really important, but it's hard to love reading if it's hard. And that's our goal here, is to be, make sure that the kids can read so that they can love reading.
Any questions for Lindsay or myself?
I always have a question. How long are these materials? Once you, once you choose them, what's the expected duration of use? One school year, two school years, until something better comes along?
No, it's at least six to seven, most likely closer to 10, because on a curriculum cycle, it's every 10 years.
And, so the investment in that curriculum would be realized over six to 10 years? That's good information.
Well, thank you for having us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we are going on to our COVID.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mayor Colson, Superintendent of Monticello Public Schools. And since I am going before Clay Swatsky, I get to use the joke of the therapy dog that we were both hoping that we could have next to us. Those of you that were here last time saw that Mr. Hackett brought Coda, and Coda was a, a great, great participant in our board meeting, so we both felt like it would be awesome to have him here with us today. I'd like to start by letting everyone know that for the last 19 months, our school district has been pivotal, leading during challenging times, whether we are helping students, staff, local businesses, and especially our healthcare professionals. We have been looked to as leaders, as we have pulled our community together in many ways. We do not want that ever to end. We will continue our weekly communication. I'm sure that everybody, you know, waits for that, can't wait for that to come each week, and we will also do our COVID-19 updates at school board meetings as a regular part, which we've been doing. So we will continue those things. Today's update, like many in the past, is all about unification and our unification efforts. So following continued meetings with our healthcare officials, we believe that our district can be even better as we lead unification across our district. Healthcare continues to be overwhelmed with patient care. Unified and increased communication efforts from me are going to be part of what we are going to do move forward. Testing protocols and mitigation strategies will be targeted areas of increased communication, so hopefully you have seen that this year. We know that it is hard right now to get tests, and so we have 4,300 tests on order in order to help that process. And Dr. Wilson, our human resource director, has got an email stating that those tests will be here by the end of the month. Nurses will work with staff on getting students to the health offices when sick. We've been especially working with a particular grade level at Eastview to really watch some of the sicknesses that students may present, and so some training from the nurses on, on how to look for some of those common symptoms, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, will be part of that training, and, and we will continue to work with all our nurses, but we're specifically looking at some of our preschool classrooms as, as we've had some illnesses going on, respiratory illnesses in our, some of our young children that are not COVID, but they are related because they are respiratory diseases, or illnesses. Parents are implored to keep testing and keep students home when students are sick. I did a sample group on our attendance today and saw that for grades eight through 12, we are, in comparison to the last three years, we are at least 2% to 3% higher on absence, absentee rate. So we know that people are at least listening to us in comparison to the last three years. And so I appreciate the efforts of parents on that. We need to continue to do that. That is the best known mitigation strategy, is to make sure that we are not around each other when we're, when we are sick. Some of the symptoms that we are, going to make sure that are part of our training, just looking at COVID-19 and resurfacing some of the most common symptoms, and so we'll just pause right there for board members to look at their packets and make sure that they see what those symptoms are. I'm not going to read them. I'm sure that you've seen them and read a lot about them. And as always, students who become ill during the day should report to the health office. If needed, they will be sent home after parents or guardians have been contacted by the health assistant or school nurse. And as soon as we can make those tests available as an option for parents, we will make those available as an option. Going to take a look at district COVID trends through the district, and so these are, are, this is our local data, and so this is information that's important to me, and that's why it's very important for our parents to do what they've always done, and that's to call in their students when they are sick. And we, we take great pride in, in follow-up phone calls, and it's very important right now with, as the COVID-19 cases in the state and our county have not subsided, they are increased in comparison to other states. So you might hear some media right now about COVID-19 going down. That is the case in most states, but we are amongst five states that are not going down right now. So I like to trust our families and trust our people, knowing that they are doing the right thing with their kids when they are sick, especially with symptoms that either are COVID-19 or related symptoms. That way, we have accurate data so that when I look up at these trends, we're making the best decisions possible for our people. And so these, this statistic right here, to me, is what I used all last year while we were all masking, and the data that I am seeing, week by week, is very similar. So I can- So I can make an assumption that the, as many people are reporting last year as they are this year, as we move through this tumultuous and absolutely challenging times in our, in our world. Next slide. Safe learning plan update. The safe learning plan is what guides us. It's what we use as administrators. It's what our school nurses use to make good decisions within our system. This, this is the truth. So anything that you hear that's, that's a question, please pick up the safe learning plan. That is what guides us when we make decisions. We would like to start transitioning some important things to our people back to our, to our schools. They're, they're important to our schools and our administration, our teachers. They're important to our families. And one of those is volunteers. We have an incredible collaborative group of parents who like to be in schools, just like our collaborative resources, community resources that we heard at the beginning of the meeting that like to connect with us and give us donations and hopes that we can continue on with our education. The same thing is true of our volunteers and our, our families. So we are going to start transitioning some things back to more of what we're used to as more of a normal expectation. And so we are going to, in November 1st, volunteers as speakers. We will start communicating that to our families. Volunteers at Nature Based, which is an outdoor educational program. Volunteers will be able to start in those programs. Volunteers working with small groups or in classrooms. We will evaluate again in December. As you can see at school board, we are sitting at a social distance a piece apart. That is important to us to model some of the mitigation strategies that we believe are very effective. And so we don't think it's prudent to bring students to a table with a non-staff member at this time. So we will reevaluate that one in December. Same thing will, with visitors in lunchrooms, we will be reevaluating that one in December. Household close contact quarantine information. I take great pride in being one of two school districts in the county that has had stricter strategies when it comes to family quarantine. But there is some things that we would like to start moving towards right now to move the needle a little bit with the family quarantines. And what we would like to do is vaccinated do not have to quarantine unless they develop symptoms or test positive. Strongly encourage testing for family members and close contacts of positive cases. And encouraging the testing route. Two negative tests are required to shorten quarantine to seven days from our current 14-day quarantine that we have. So these are some of the things that we are taking a step back. We're not taking a huge step, but we're taking a step towards helping our families get more involved in our school system, and that's important to us. Like always, this will be part of our weekly communication after discussion today at the board level as we try and navigate these small steps of change. Speaking of school board discussion, this would be our time now to, to throw out any thoughts, questions, or concerns. And as a reminder for our families, we always, well, we have been running community coffee chats once a month, but for the last four months, since July, we have been doing two a month. So we want to engage our families, and that's why we offer some of those things. School board meetings, there are ways to be an act, more active participant. And you can find the directions of how to propose assistance comment in a video on our website. So with that being said, I'm going to stay up here, but it's a team of us. We have principals here, we have our resource officer, and myself for questions.
I'll go first. Do we have some data from Wright County? Obviously, our school district is not the only school district in Wright County. But do we have Wright and Sherburne County, because we overlap in Sherburne County, the vaccination rates of 12 and up in estimate? And do we know if that's going up and at what rate?
Yeah, it's definitely going up. I can get access, I have access to that. Every week, we have a meeting with Wright County. They provide vaccination rates. They provide COVID-positive test rates. They ask us all to look at the county data and the state data, but then they ask us to continue to look into our own zip code and school data as well. I, I will send, I will send that out and.
Off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head. You know, I know we were moving into that 60% range, so I believe that's where we're at, but I'll go get that number.
Do we know another vaccination clinic in the plans?
Yeah, we're waiting to see with what the FDA does. And so every week, that is part of our update. And they said we're still on hold, but we do have information from our families, at least that initial response of how many are interested. And that number, Clay, have you looked at that today? If you just could, I'll keep. Yeah, I was going to say it was on 200 last week. That number was slowly creeping up through the weeks that that's been out there.
I do think it's important for us to hear the pleas of the healthcare community and to stress the importance to our families of taking actions to mitigate everything that they can.
Well, that Center Care, the city, and myself have, you know, instituted a weekly meeting all of last year. There have been periods of time where we moved to, you know, two times per month, but we will continue to get updates from our local healthcare facility, Center Care. That's who the meetings have been with, for me, for the last 19 months, along with MDH. Last year, they were involved in weekly meetings with myself and MDE weekly meetings with myself. And now we are just with Wright County as our weekly government agency that runs a weekly meeting. So we will continue to have all these meetings and listen to, you know, guidance and stats and data. I, I share everything with you as a school board, share comments from local doctors, share comments with, you know, concerns from our people and our families and doctors that maybe have other thoughts as we move forward and are connecting adjacent communities. So try get every information that comes my way. I can tell you that, you know, at the beginning of COVID, it was a lot of communication from our families of, come on, Olson, you stand up. This is local. Schools are more local. You, you got this. You got to stand up. We need that. And now it's really, you know, listening to families who are worried about if we're, and asking if we are doing enough. And so I think that question is a great question for me to be able to say. I, you know, that's why, you know, we do weekly communication to parents, like, we need you staying, we need students staying home when they're sick. Should have been doing that decades ago, you know, because I know that you can be a carrier when you don't have symptoms, but there is a larger likelihood that you have some kind of symptom and that, that staying home will increase our odds of keeping all of our people healthy.
I think that from area schools, from friends and that I also have, we are on the more stricter side for quarantine, where some of those are not handling it the same way. And I know masks are a hot topic, but we, right now, you have the choice as a family. If you decide to wear a mask, you can wear a mask. And if your family decides not to, then you don't. And it seems like that is working out. I am not in the school during the day, but I'm assuming that there are a lot of students and parents that are, or and teachers that are choosing to wear masks. And then there's the ones that are not.
I would say on average, it's about three to five students per class would be, from what I've seen, principals. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
I could share at the middle school, we talked about it the first day, and I was very impressed with the kids. It's really not an issue. We've got a number of kids that are wearing masks. And it's no different than the kids who aren't. So I just think that there's a definite support from child to child, whether you're wearing a mask. There's been zero instances of kids pugging each other about the masks. And I would agree with Eric's numbers that there's a mix of staff and students at the middle school that are wearing masks. I think they're handling them themselves very well.
I know, I can say I appreciate.
About three to five kids in class. And a percentage of staff members, I see a couple more every day.
I know, I just want to say that I appreciate the district's commitment to continually update us on what's changing. Obviously, week to week, that's why we track the results, because the numbers are always changing and that the kids are our number one focus, that we follow the facts when, in regards to school-aged children and effects there is, that you've given families options. I appreciate that. That we just base all of our decisions off of facts, not opinions or fear. And if we just keep leading that way, I think we'll be going in the right direction.
I just have a comment about, I'm a healthcare professional myself, and I want to just urge caution in associating the staffing shortages in healthcare facilities with school masking. I think the staffing shortages in healthcare facilities are multifactorial. I don't think that they're necessarily a result of anything that we're doing or not doing. And I, I'm made when I see the attempts at trying to connect those two dots. We are not a healthcare, as a public school. So that's just my two cents on that. But I, as a healthcare professional, I want to put that out there that I certainly have opinions about healthcare facilities and I have opinions about schools, and they are different. So. But the staffing shortages are real, but they're not all caused by COVID.
I have one more comment. I have talked to some teachers just this week that have mentioned how nice it is this year to actually be able to see facial cues, like with speech and when they don't have the mask on, that that was really restricting last year and hard to know the child's mood or what they were feeling, if they were happy or sad. You could really only tell by their eyes. That was a little bit difficult. And just like, being social and mental health, it just felt like this year was going better.
Have there been any difficulties with the masking on the buses?
Yes, for sure. That's one, a huge area of concern, whether it be parents contacting myself, principals, Joe Kunkel and from the Hoagland Bus Company. There is no doubt that we have went through thousands of masks. And a lot of those masks are, are being given to students, but only to be found on the floor afterwards. And so I know that I've had a suggestion from a community member, a parent, at one of our last coffee chats to at least have signs and, and continue moving forward with communication. And Joe Kunkel and I talk multi-times a week, trying to move that forward. I also know what a challenging job it is to be a bus driver. And so they're balancing, keeping kids safe on a bus of, with traffic, obeying traffic laws, you know, any types of noise that might be on the bus. And then also making sure that you're watching traffic to, you know, be that, the driver that we all want, taking our most prized possessions to school every day. So they're balancing everything they can, along with communication about masks. But I think it's, you know, important for us all to realize that, you know, that the mask on the bus is, is one thing, you know, and it's, and it's an important thing. But there's a lot of things that those bus drivers are doing to get our kids safe to schools. And I think as a parent myself, I want to know that, you know, that our drivers are doing everything they can to, you know, keep our kids safe on the buses, and COVID-19 is one of them. But we all know, living in this town for a long time, there has been tragedy on the bus, and we don't want that to come into play. We want students, you know, and we want, I'm sorry, we want bus drivers doing everything they can to get our kids to school safe and, and, you know, encouraging and getting masks on students is one piece of that puzzle, but it's not an easy piece. We will continue our efforts on the buses. We have some incentive ideas that we're working on right now with the bus company. And so we'll, more to come on that.
I think we can go on to our referendum update then.
Appreciate. I think it's important to have discussion as, in front of our, our community tonight. We have a lot of these updates, more of just updates, but this was one that we actually spent more time as a pause. I think that's important. So thank you for great discussion, all board members.
Good evening. We just wanted to provide a quick update. Obviously, the election is fast approaching. Two weeks from tomorrow night will be general election day. So we just wanted to give the board a quick update where things stand with the election right now. The, to start with, Superintendent Olson just mentioned coffee chats that he's been holding this fall, which have been a, you know, a great forum for community members to come and ask questions about a number of things, including the referendum and to get some more detailed information. And it's also been a great source for us to, to learn more about what people, what information people need. And it's provided a lot of the information that's now on our FAQ page on our website, just trying to provide those answers to the community that we've been frequently hearing questions from. But in lieu of what was going to be the, the next and final coffee chat of the fall on October 30th, we will instead be holding a fall community event, a free, family-friendly event for the community that is open to school families and the general community alike that will be at Pinewood the morning of Saturday, October 30th. We'll be sending out more information on this this week. But it'll feature family-friendly events, some sports activities, some crafts. And we'll, of course, be on hand with administrators and other educators, ready to provide information regarding the referendum and the school year at large and, and anything else that families may have. And really, it's just an opportunity to get the community together and build some connections. And there will be free pancakes. Superintendent Olson's excited about that. So just trying to make it a fun family event and bring some people together here this fall. As far as kind of the, the legal side of the election, we, we've sent out two mailings in the last week and a half. Our referendum notice mailing just went out. Families will be receiving that this week. And we had to send out a notice for a polling place change the week and a half ago or so because where we're holding the special election this year is different than where it was five or six years ago, whenever we last held a special election. So we've had to fulfill those two requirements. We have our second notice going in the Monticello Times newspaper this week regarding the election. And we have all notices posted in our district office as required. That covers that, I think. Early voting is open, as, as you all know, and as we've tried to broadcast several times to our community, it's been open since September 17th. We have seen numbers pick up pretty considerably the last couple of office days, Friday and Monday. We've had eight to 12 people in both days, which in talking with other districts around us is, those are really good turnout days. It had been pretty slow up until that, but we're, we're hoping to see a steady stream. Obviously, we're doing everything, everything we can to provide the information to our school community and make it readily available. It's, I don't know if anyone's seen, it's now like the splash page on the, the front of our website. If you go to the website, it, first thing it shows you is that early voting is open, and it also directs you to all of the information that we have, including, you know, tax, tax information, three questions, what's going to be on the ballot, where everything is going, kind of all that, all that information on the, on the website that we've previously shared with you guys. And on that note, as we always say, there is, all the more information available at our website at www.monticello.k12.mn.us/levy. Does the board have any questions regarding the referendum where things currently stand?
For the early voting, is it only Monday through Friday, or is there a Saturday that's?
It, it is Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30.
Okay.
District office. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Now on to our first reading.
Great, first reading of policies. Tonight, we are bringing forward the following policies. Policy 410, family and medical leave. Policy 413. Policy 414, mandated reporting of childhood neglect, sexual abuse. Policy 415, mandated reporting of maltreatment. neglect, sexual abuse. Policy 415, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Policy 506, student discipline. Policy 514, bullying prohibition policy. Policy 522, student sex nondiscrimination. Policy 524, network system and internet acceptable use policy. Policy committee has had opportunity to work through these policies with MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, recommended changes. All board members have had the opportunity to review the policies in your board packet. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but you mentioned MSBA. I'd like to point out that for policy number 514, we've elected to go with an MDE policy in place of the MSBA policy, which we feel at this point is better language. It's more appropriate for our needs.
Here we can move on to our...
Right. We'll move all those policies forward to second reading. Thank you to the policy committee for your hard work. Please, if you do come up with a question from now until the next school board meeting on November 1st, please get those questions to me or... Second reading, we also have a policy to bring forth for second reading tonight, and that's policy 505, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials. So the policy has had the opportunity to work through this policy as well, had it in front of the board, and check and balance here for policy 5. Any questions at this time regarding this policy?
I get a motion to approve.
Go ahead.
I move to approve policy 505 as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We've come to the end of the agenda, and I can seek a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes 4-0. Meeting is adjourned at 7:07. Thank you, everyone.